Five thirty-one P M. We'll call the meeting to order. And invitation of First Methodist Church, Sam Chambers, is he?
She.
Are you Sam?
Uh, yeah.
All right.
Always Chambers, that changed.
Okay. He will lead us in a prayer and pledge, please ma'am.
Yeah. Let's go to God. Gracious, loving Father, as we come together, Lord, we just, we desire for this community, for the city, for these people, for your people to be blessed. And in doing so, we look to you for your guidance, your wisdom, your strength. May we speak with courage in the manner that you call us to speak. May we be embracing your love and grace as we hear one another and one another's hearts. Lord, may we come together as you call us to be. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. You're welcome to stay as long as you like.
If I can bear.
Before we go any further. Going to make a couple of things known. We had an incident earlier today. It was worked out. It's been taken care of. But from a police officer standpoint, it could be the fire department or something, but what I'm going to talk about had better not ever happen again, especially in the police department, though there will be a repercussion. What that is, I don't know yet. I'll begin with the city manager on it. We'll discuss things later. But um I do not want an officer telling a dispatcher, you or the dispatcher saying you need to go to so and so, we've got this problem with an animal or person, whatever. I do not want the officer going, hey, I don't handle that kind of call. But just tell them to call whoever or work it out themselves. As police officers, you will go to that call regardless what it is. And it's very important, you will not tell the dispatcher to tell a complainant. Whatever, the dispatcher has their hands full. They've got enough to take care of anyway, and that's not their job. I worked these highways out here almost forty years, just these highways and more. I'm in over fifty years now. Never ever one time did the dispatch call say, Bob, you need to go here or there or where. Never one time did I ever say, well, I can't get there or this is not something I handle. Tell them to call so and so or tell them to do the best that they can can do. I don't, I don't want to hear that. I don't want to ever hear that. We are here, you're here. The city pays us, pays you all. We don't get paid anything, but they pay you all. And we're here as a public service and will always be a public service to them. Now, there may be an occasion where an officer can't get there at the moment. That's understandable. But the dispatcher can always tell them, listen, he's tied up, she's tied up right now with whatever, and they don't have to go into what's going on, but I will contact them and tell them to get you as soon as they can. Let it go from there then. But I do not want to ever hear or see on the law where a person had called for assistance or help, whatever, animal, being some that one of the officers did not go. Doesn't work. It does not work for me. I never did that in my entire career, and I'm in fifty-one years of law enforcement and still certified under DPS as a special ranger. If they called me up tomorrow, pack my bags and go where they want me to go, you know, I hope that they don't call me because I don't want to go anywhere. You know, but anyway, I just want to be clear with that. We'll get with the city manager, make a memo out of it. We're going to have everybody sign the memo, date it, and we'll get each person, get the city to put in, put it in their personnel file. Take care of your business. Thank you. All right. Do we have anybody to speak?
We don't.
Nothing. All right. Express of present announcement, uh, no, out of one presentation by Stevens County Judge Michael Rhodes. Judge?
I'm kind of scared to stand up right now.
Can you stand up with me?
Well, if you want to come over here.
Is it okay?
Come up here.
You want me to go there?
Move it a little closer.
Well, I felt your passion, Bob.
All right.
Well, what I wanted to uh talk to you all about is elections. The county has for a long time covered the cost of election equipment and um training that was required and to operate that equipment, populate the data, those kinds of things. And we've always done that uh as a courtesy to all of our partners in inside the county. You guys here at the city, uh hospital, school, all of those things. So, and I think this time around, I I come the other day to early vote and y'all were doing the old paper poll. And that's uh, that's the antiquated way to do it. Now, you have these things called poll pads and it's basically like an iPad that scans the driver's license and tells you if they're in the city or not. So you know that election integrity is there. Um, a lot of communities our size have an elections administrator and that person is trained and responsible for conducting elections. Every single session, new laws are passed that make that job more burdensome than it is today. And it's gotten to the point uh where it's a full-time job by itself. Right now, Kristy Latham, our tax assessment collector, she oversees that. She does all the training and we sent additional staff this year to be trained also from different departments where we could have help during election time. Now, we realize that we're statistically responsible for federal and state elections, right? That are statewide, federal and county elections, but there also is uh our machinery or the poll pads and those other things. That's quite a bit of expense to be trained and certified to to run those. I don't know how much the city gets into because I'm not familiar with your elections process. But what we found out here, I think last election, was this stuff matters when it really matters. This one's making sense, something that you guys do at the city or the county or the school or hospital. And then you certainly have to have all your ducks in a row when it comes to making sure everybody, nobody's being disenfranchised and the list goes on. So what I'm here today to just start a conversation with the city. I've been to the school board and the hospital as well to, for us to work together to fund an election administrative position that would work for all of us. That'd be independent of the county. Now, the county would fund, probably fund the majority of it. Just to give you an idea of how it works other places. The county would appoint elections administrator. That administrator would turn around then and have an agreement with the taxing entities like we do collecting taxes, same way. So they would have an agreement with the city to run your elections or to oversee them, certify them and make sure that they're done according to the law. And not that, not saying anything is not being done like that today, right? Um, and I think one contract that I saw uh was the cost of the elections plus like a ten percent administrative cost. So what you're going to pay already to host an election like you're doing now. But there being administrative cost, a percentage tax on to that, so it's not some absorbed amount. I think for the school, it would have been like five or six hundred dollars more than what their budget was already. And then uh it would help that ministry, it would help offset the cost of the selections administration. I think it'd be a benefit for all of us, uh, long-term. Elections are not going to be easier, they're going to be tougher. And I think what we're going to see in the future, if it's, if the past is anything, the last few election cycles, any indication of how this is going to go, is that contesting election will be the tool of the person who doesn't provide it. And that seems to be certainly statewide, if you look at different counties there. Today or yesterday, Stevens County, we had hired attorney and we had to file a lawsuit in Austin against the attorney, Texas Attorney General, because they were asked us to release election data that we would have been sued by the provider had we done that. So we, our only recourse was to have a legal counsel. That also applied in the recount. The county spent several thousand dollars supporting our elections administrator against all these challenges. And you don't do those things by the book. You end up, you could break federal law, state law and those kinds of things. You make sure that they do it right. We have a lot of inter- interloper agreements. A lot of corporation between the hospital, the city and the county. We fund ambulance together. And that's pretty expensive, but we know that this need is necessary. And I think this, this, the time has come for this type of office to be funded and we can come together. And again, I don't think we're talking about major costs to the city. It's just being able to work out that agreement with the elections administrator. We're getting ready to go into budget cycle time. I think the city's getting ready to do that as well. And we're, we would just like to see what the attitude and the desire is from the city, if they're willing to work with us. And the school is willing to work with us. There's some things we've got to iron out, obviously. Maybe we can put together a working group to do that. Um, the hospital's a lot smaller entity, so I'm not sure how that that's going to go, but right now, what we do as a courtesy is using along all this equipment out. Um, and so in the future, we're not going to be able to do that. I don't think we can continue to do that without recouping some costs. We can do this in a way that we all work together. I think it benefits the everybody, every citizen. It's so necessary. Um, did that without notes? So if I missed something or didn't clarify something, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. I would certainly like to hear your thoughts, if this is something you think, if we worked out the details of, that we can move forward and maybe work together to make this happen.
Judge, how does the city figure what it might cost, uh, if you go about figuring that money-wise?
That's a probably good question. Uh, usually, I know for the county and maybe, you know, do it similar is there's uh, usually a budget. We, we set up in the budget process, what historically what elections have cost. Uh, if there are elections that have presidential or gubernatorial elections and then, of course, all those other offices go with it. Those years are a lot more expensive, the off-years where you have constitutional amendments, those are a lot less. So it kind of depends uh what those would be.
It's a similar process. I will say, you know, from a staff perspective, this is very common. Um, like you said, a lot of counties have election administrators and then they contract with the other taxing entities. And they basically, you know, charge the cost and then an admin. And from our perspective, I don't think it would be, I mean, you know, we have to get into the details and see what that is. I don't really think it would be that much above what we're currently budgeting for the elections, number one. And number two, the benefit to the taxing entities is we get, you know, the county to conduct those elections. Um, and it's streamed, and so for us, it saves resources on staff, but it also, um, I think just for the citizens, it really provides for uniformity. Um, and they know, you know, where they're going and it's the same kind of um voting equipment. And, you know, when they come in, it's, you know, it's all the same. And so I think it works out for the general public as well.
And you have that one person that receives, their office receives that training. Um, and I think there's like three election schools this year we're paying for, for our staff to be certified.
Already attended.
Okay.
Yeah. There's a lot, I'm sure.
So in those years that, that, like whenever I came on and Gary came on, there was no election. So if there isn't a city election, do we still pay during that election cycle or would that be?
That's a, that's a great question. And I don't, I don't know how that really works.
Would that be kind of up to the contract negotiation between the administrator and the city?
I imagine if there was some way to say, hey, historically, the admin fee was, if it was ten percent, you budget three thousand dollars, that's a, a small, you know, amount toward neighborhood education or something, we could work out the details, but I'm not a hundred percent. I, I, I looked over one, but it was kind of extensive and I didn't get in all the weeds of it, but great question. I'm not a hundred percent.
Is there a time schedule that we need to do something? I mean, that you need to know something or Cynthia needs to know something to do this or?
Yeah, if, if there was a way, I, I think really what the county's trying to do is just get a feel of how the different taxing entities feel about it. Um, what we may do is if every entity said, you know, we'd rather run our own elections and just use your equipment, then we'd probably come up with a fee schedule to do that. Uh, whether it be, I think this time we just probably had no cost printed off that. And we also do no cost, I think, at the poll pads is what they're called, for lack of a better word. I think we spent thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars a few meetings ago buying new ones because the law said they had to be updated. That's the way this technology works, right? And um with all our machinery is that way. I think my first year in twenty nineteen, we, one of our machines at Tabulace was um thirty-four thousand is how much it cost, I believe. Um, so it depends on what year it is and what you have to update and what the legislature does.
Not that equipment, but the cost of that would be spread among the entities.
Yes.
As far as the upkeep and all of that.
Yes, sir. And I think right now, the, the different admin fees that would come in from those taxing entities would offset that. And we're not talking about a lot of money.
Yeah.
But it goes a long way.
Right.
For shared, I guess, shared sacrifice, maybe.
Right.
Okay. My question is, um, school, city and up in the hospital have May elections, so that would we continue to do that or would we have to change our, to November? That would be.
Should be, yeah, wouldn't have to change. And, and in fact, uh, you could, in those May elections with election administration, have combined elections. That includes a ballot with city, hospital candidates and, and school candidates, all on the same ballot.
School, school by law has to, to share the, the minimum of, I don't know, on share with the county or the city. They can't hold their own election. There, there is a law there and now if they get to cancel it, there's a whole bunch of.
Sure.
But, but um, anyway, that would be just something.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great point. And I think that if you get several entities at one whack in May, you could actually add them all together, have one ballot, share the cost expenses, your admin costs and all that goes down. Great.
I think, I mean, depending on how you guys feel about it, I mean, so really, the word is, I mean, is it something that you're interested in pursuing? And then I liked your idea of a, of a working group and just looking at, you know, because you're going to have to analyze the cost and, um, and all of that. So maybe there's a member, you guys designate a member of the city commission that would be a part of that. And then, of course, staff would be as well. And then with the other entities, you can see that.
Oh, yeah, that's a point.
I'll be one. I'm an old government teacher.
Right on.
And Blake doesn't know anything because he was in my government class.
Was that a student or a teacher, was that? Well, I, and again, I don't, what I'm going to be sure to convey is we're not asking the city to pay anything that we don't think is a shared cost unfair, right? So we're not saying, hey, city recommends, why don't you pay some of the county's bill? But I think what we're actually, actually asking is, can you help us a little bit with something we're already doing for your benefit? Just help us a little bit, that's all we ask.
As far as the timing, this would be a question and somewhat of a recommendation if they're, you know, looking towards going this route. Um, I'd like it to be before budget, so we could accommodate it. And the plan for it in the budget would be, the only request I would have.
And we can do that sooner than later. And uh, when, when does y'all's budget cycle, your workshops and stuff like that start?
Well, we're, I'm kind of starting tonight and it's going to go.
Okay.
Going to keep going.
Okay, good. Well, we'll, we'll do sooner than later.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is my last meeting. I've been to other entities, so I'll just shoot out an email and see if they can, well, have one individual from each group and start. Yeah, from the different boards, along with the executives. Sound good. And the fact that it's all coming out of the mayor's salary has always helped me. Well, thank y'all for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff report, important discussion only. No action may be taken on out of this portion of the agenda other than to provide general corrections to staff or to correct, place such items on a future agenda for action. And I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, I did want to, I know he introduced himself, but I didn't want to put him on the spot and stand up. I'm really excited to introduce our new public work director, Todd Henderson. Um, he's been having a bang up two weeks. And, uh, well, I, 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 don't sit down here. We won't make you do a big speech, but um, just tell them a little bit about yourself.
Um, Todd Henderson, originally from Sweetwater, Texas. Uh, bounced around Texas for a while, while, been in this business now for both to thirty years. Um, my family and I greatly appreciate the opportunity and we're looking forward to starting a new life here. There's lots to do.
Family-wise, so like age-wise, like in any quarterback.
Catcher for varsity baseball.
We, we can handle, we can, we can make a receiver out of it. Nice.
Um, a couple of other things on, on the report. I did want to bring to your attention, um, the Texas Department is up there, the Texas Department of Transportation, uh, in partnership with the Federal Highway Administration in Stevens County, um, will be replacing two officer bridges. One will be on uh North Live Oak and one will be on North Shelton. Um, we've got maps here that we will be, you know, already visited with the judge a little bit. Um, and, you know, partnering to get the word out. Um, but this is, uh, essentially this project could take up to seven months. Um, that the through traffic on those streets would be closed. So I think if you look at Shelton, if you're coming, you know, east or westbound, if you go northbound on Shelton, you will not be able to get through. So you can still access the shops on either side. Um, but you can't go through, the bridge will be closed, as you can see. And then, you know, if you're coming southbound on Dyer, there will not be through traffic from southbound Dyer. And then, um, Elm, obviously, there's no through traffic there. Um, and then the one on uh Live Oak, North Live Oak, that's kind of that bridge at an angle a little bit. Um, and so is where Dyer comes into it. So from Elm, you won't have northbound. Now, there's only one house on the southwest corner of Elm and Live Oak. Um, there and they'll be able to access the driveway off of Live Oak. Um, and then same from Lindsey, Lindsey going southbound, uh, there won't be through traffic, but people can access, um, their driveways there.
This is no, no cost to us, the city?
Correct. On this one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So we do want to get the word out about that one. Um, and then, um, I did want to just let you know, early voting, um, closed today, as you all know. Um, and the early voting totals are one sixty-seven. Um, and then, of course, we've got Election Day, May sixth. Um, and then just also want to let you know, the American Legion, as you all directed, um, will be advertising again for CO Biz and um, that starts tomorrow and will be next week and they will be due back here. It'll be on your June agenda, but it will be due back here, the CO Biz City Hall by four P M. on May twenty-ninth. So, um, their time is charm. And uh, if anybody is interested in submitting a CO bid on the American Legion, you'll have your opportunity. Um, there aren't many electronic meetings that they can. Yeah, and this time, we had one issue where they wanted to email it because we didn't specifically say that. Um, they weren't able to, but we put that in there so they can submit them in person, uh, or email them and accept them either way. Um, and other than that, we just have, um, all of our, there's a lot of events coming up. Summertime is here. Um, we've got Municipal Clerk's Week, um, that's April thirtieth through May sixth. It's all there. I'm going to just highlight a few. International Fire Day, Fire Fighter Day is May fourth. Frontier Day, of course, is May fifth and sixth. Um, I see, uh, U D is here from the chamber and I don't know if you have any last minute announcements or?
Um, no, no, every encouragement, yeah, I'll receive encouragement. Well, um, it's gonna, well, the um, difference from last time I was here, we're selling wristbands for carnival rides. So Friday wristbands will be fifteen dollars. Um, and the carnival will be open from three to ten P M. Um, and then the next day, Saturday, carnival wristbands, twenty dollars, uh, from ten A M. to ten P M. So come on and ride the rides.
And that night is, um, on stage is Finest?
Yeah, Finest Myth on Friday at eight-thirty at Trade Barns, at the Trade Barns. Um, and I, so can I announce who's doing the national anthem, who's singing? It's Cynthia Northrop. She is going to. I know, but I did want to throw it out there. We've done our like little Monday morning minutes and we mentioned it here and there, but I, we are honored to have you come and sing our national anthem. Thank you so much.
Of course. So and the American Idol competition is five o'clock. That's five o'clock Saturday at the pavilion. Um, and before that, it's going to be at, um, make Breckenridge Pageant at two o'clock at the pavilion. Um, so those two events are the only things that are happening at the pavilion on Saturday. Everything else will be at the Trade Barn area. Um, and that's, and then we'll have a petting zoo and miniature pony rides, just, and then inflate the fun bounce houses. It's going to be so much fun. You guys don't want to miss it. That's my commercial. Well, you've done a lot of work and I know a lot of people have been, uh, working with you and Stacy, you know, I want to recognize Stacy. Who's been doing a lot of work and, uh, put Todd to work right away and you too, you know, the public works guy's been helping with some, um, issues down there, just getting everything ready. So, um, yeah, a lot of, a lot of work went into it, so we appreciate all you all. Yeah. Um, and, you know, there's going to be other things that are going on. Stevens County Arena Ranch, uh, rodeo, the, uh, Stevens County Airport fly-in and car show. And I believe you have shuttles. Or do you guys still have shuttles there?
So there will be shuttles, um, that can transport people from the air, um, the fly-in to Frontier Days and then to the Ranch Rodeo. The Frontier Days, um, there's going to be the shuttle right in front of Q two, um, from ten A M. to two P M. on Saturday. Um, so that's when the shuttles are going to be running. Um, the only thing that people need to know is if you get on the shuttle and you go to the Ranch Rodeo, you will have to pay to go into the concert. Um, and the, uh, pilots will have a wristband that they'll be able to shuttle from one location to the other and kind of just go around and check things out in town.
And then, of course, the election day, um, is going on that day, May sixth. So, uh, the city will have a booth down there. We've got, we'll plan for several things. I know, um, on red and some other things. We're going to have some applications down there. Um, and, uh, yeah. Um, and then you, I, I, I don't want to pull out all of these, but, um, you can see them there. Um, we do have, um, the department head reports, but do we have a shuttered range? I have no idea, just, just we could buy it. Okay.
Are we all?
Yeah.
Want to touch base on, um, I was here a couple of months ago about the drug awareness class. Got about another three police on that and it's going to be done. It's huge. I mean, kids will respond as well to it. Um, so that'll be finishing up this month. Um, also something that we haven't mentioned, um, we are going to get with Tech Stock. We're going to do a step program this month. Starting May twenty-second, there's gonna be a clicker ticket. It's gonna run for about a week and a half. And then in July, when the cooperation slow down. So that'll be another step program that we're gonna do. I did receive a grant from Tech Stock. Basically, that is to reimburse the city for the overtime officers.
Can you specifically give us those dates in July?
I don't know. I know the month twenty-second, but I don't know.
Is that gonna be within the city?
Yes. Wear your seat carry off. Seatbelt, seatbelt to July. Feeding in Ju-, or I'm sorry, May is this month's gonna be the clicker ticket. And then July, we're gonna do the operation slowdown. We're also going to, it's coming up close. I'm stressing out big time over it. May eighth, we've got our shattered green program. I know that Rob was involved a couple of years ago. He worked for the newspaper. He was one of our media guys. Basically, shattered dreams is a mock crash that we put on in front of the high school. We've already got two cars donated by Malcolm Jump Vehicles that we've, that we have got our hands on. They're at Cal Abbe. They're gonna get the windows pulled out of them, windshield pulled out of them. So that there's no broken glass for the kids to land. We've got close to twenty, I'd probably say twenty-five kids that are gonna be involved. The crash, there's gonna be two that are dead on scene. There's going to be three there, got three that are injured, two will go by ambulance. The third will be flown by ferry back. But we're gonna, we've done this, we try to do it every forty years. So the government coming in will see it again. So we try to do every forty years if we can. But that'd be going on May eighth. The date of the crash is May eighth and it says here the ninth also. That's gonna be our assembly. Where the kids get up and they talk about what it made them feel like, just the whole experience of the thing. There's a lot of people to thank. The school, we've got some civic organizations, we've got churches, the hospital, EMS, us, the S O. Everybody involved. And it takes a lot of work to get this thing done. But that'll be some of the things that we can look forward to this month. Trying to get our young people where they're a little more responsible men. That's all I got.
Noah, when, when's the last time we had one? It's been, it's been a pretty good while because.
I was with, I was with the fire department the last time. It was five years ago. And the one that Rob helped us on was thirteen, few years ago almost.
Yeah, because my ex-partner was still here. We, Bundick, you know, we, whatever. The bad part about that is what brings back to me, one, and I think two students are no longer here since that happened ten years ago. And it turned out, and I'm trying to remember this, they weren't wearing seatbelts. And we, we were, this Atman County, and Bundick and I worked both wrecks that night, you know.
But that's one thing that I believe in and also Chief Cantrell believes in. I believe education is our number one defensive, is anything. That goes with life. You got to be issued. I think that's the number one thing. So if we can reach one or two people, I mean, it's, it's, it's a win. Thank you.
Thank you, Noah.
And you will see in your packets, the department head reports. And we're, what we're trying to do is just make them, you can see them easily at a glance. So they're more graphic and pleasing. So this is basically our bank accounts. I won't go through, I mean, I do want you to kind of split through all of them, but you guys have them, you know, and I hopefully, you know, you can look at them. There's a lot of good information to go the next one. So like sales tax, revenues received, this is a history. And then if you go to the next one, you'll see that graphic. And obviously the sale tax are up and, you know, they keep for the last several years have been increasing, but that way you kind of see where the spikes are and when, when it's higher. Code enforcement, very busy. I mean, they're keeping very busy with mowing and some standard structures back there. We're bringing a batch of them for commission action into the June meeting. We are working on four right now. In fact, street department started one today. And you'll see later on in the agenda where we're partnering with the county and with the E D C on those two. So code enforcement, again, the violations and the cases sent to me is the court. Police Department, just kind of lets you see the traffic stops and the citations and warrants that are out. And then just the types of, you know, calls that they have and arrests that they have. Animal control, what's going on out there. And. Fire, of course, we've got a lot of, you see the calls for service and the alarms answered. So hopefully this, this format will be easy for you guys to look at this stuff at a glance and just get good information. So we'll have it in our report every month.
All right. Thank you. Consider agenda. I'm gonna read these three. Well done. Consider approval of April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, Brecker Commission Meeting Minutes as reported. Item six, considering approval of fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. Annual Audit Engagement Letter with George Morgan and Sneak P C. Item seven, discussion and unnecessary action regarding approving the second reading of the resolution authorizing Breckenridge Economic Development Corporation's amended project slash lease with R G N.
I move to approve, consider agenda items five thirty-seven is presented second.
Motion second, all in favor? None opposed. Thank you. Public hearing items. We're gonna open this public hearing item at six oh six P M. Do we have any? All right. There are, there are none. We're gonna close the public hearing at six oh seven P M.
Do you want me to?
No, oh, I'm sorry. Go back to where we were.
So we've been operating this facade grant for the last six, nine, nine, six months, a little. Anyway, because of the scope of it, we're, each project is under the ten thousand dollar limit, but because we're looking at doing a lot more than ten thousand, that was appropriate to bring it to you guys for, you know, get your approval, plus we're expanding this. So the facade grants that we have been doing with downtown development were for just the downtown. We're gonna expand that with your approval to include all of commercial property within the city limits of Breckenridge. So the facade granted, basically, we will pay fifty percent of facade improvements up to a cap of a five thousand dollar grant. And so it's worked out great. Downtown, we've got, I think about five other ones that are, have applied and been approved or working on it. Haven't got the final payment. But we've added a little, a few extra dollars to it to get us through the rest of this year. I mentioned last meeting that I expect this to be a kind of a permanent project that we'll keep on the books. That will budget for this each year to put, you know, maybe like forty, fifty thousand into the budget to, as we go forward. So one of the, the issues with commercial property is that sometimes the, the looks of things are less important to some retailers, to some businesses than the actual bottom line of what their business is doing. So we want to give them some encouragement to actually make their buildings pretty as well. And so with that, I mean, you, you may be seeing paint jobs, you may be seeing brick, stone, facades, going up on metal buildings, signage replacements, or even just new signage going up where there wasn't any to begin with. So it should really help the visibility and overall aesthetic of the community to do this. And so we're asking for your approval to, for. We're adding about twenty-five thousand dollars to the budgets. We have a total of fifty-two thousand and seventy-five dollars left for the rest of this year to improve this night, to, to go towards facade improvements. And then to also expand it to the downtown, to all businesses in Breckenridge. Any questions?
Well, this is the public hearing part. They'll talk about in the action items.
Yes.
So speak around.
We're closing public here then at six eleven P M. Thank you. Action items, number nine, discussion and any necessary action regarding Breckenridge Economic Development Corporation recommended for fashion grants.
I move to approve Breckenridge Economic Development Corporation's recommendation for facade grants.
Motion second, all in favor? None opposed. Item ten, discussion and unnecessary action regarding interlocal with Stevens County for street maintenance.
So this is an interlocal. We've kind of been talking about this for a while. So we, excuse me, we have it here before me today. And the agreement, essentially what that is, is that the county crews will provide the labor and the equipment and the, the city will provide the materials for street improvements. And we would do, we would select roads. I have, you know, I'm gonna be talking about some later, but we would select roads that would be conducive to, you know, more rural sections because it's chip seal road. So roads that have a bar ditch with no curb and, and I would say curvy, but you know, curves. So. That's, I mean, the agreement is pretty standard. You know, we really appreciate, again, the partnership with the county, very much so. If you have any questions, happy to answer them. It's pretty straightforward.
Is there a starting date yet or have we got to that point when they can not start?
Well, once, yeah, so once you guys approve this, then we'll get with them and they'll schedule. We'll talk about the different candidates of roads and then they'll. I mean, they've got their own things to do and they've got, I mean, Judge, I know you and I talked about it the other day, but I mean, like right now, they're kind of focusing on blading. It would be in this painting season though.
I know. So Michael, this thanks to him and he knows this as well as I do and others that's been here for a good while. This would not have happened a few years ago between the city and the county. Because there were just too much turbulence between the two. So I'm thankful to Cynthia, I'm thankful to you, we're able to get together, work on this and get some. And this is, with this was talked about years ago. This is nothing new. Like I said, in the past, I've been to a meeting or two and nothing got gone, done. So I'm just thankful to both of you for being able to work together.
Absolutely. And our commissioners, for you know, I'm one of, one of, one of five. Teamwork makes a dream work. And so I appreciate them and I've been Blake's here a few times and these other commissioners and, and you two, Mayor, we've talked about this a long time and just Cynthia had the Midas touch.
All right. Motion on that?
I move to approve the interlocal agreement with Stevens County for street maintenance.
Motion second, all in favor? None opposed. Thank you, guys. Item eleven, discussion and any necessary action regarding an agreement between Stevens County, Breckenridge Economic Development Corporation and the city of Breckenridge partner on the demolition of substandard structures.
So again, you know, more partnering and I will say, we're attending a meeting with, you know, with the judge and the commissioner and the commissioner, you know, volunteered this and I'm like, yes, that'd be wonderful. So like you said, it's really a team effort over there and happy to be willing. So what this is, this is a three-way agreement. And so been talking with David and he took it to his board as well. Essentially, it's just an agreement for the county to come in and help with the identified substandard homes that have been declared substandard and demolish them and then haul them to our monofil. And they will be reimbursed by the E D C twenty-five hundred per home that will cover, you know, the cost of that. So some of, probably not all the cost actually, but certainly will help a little bit. So that in the fire department, I mean, will help. They'll be on site to, to make sure that everything's going well. And our, if our public works crews are needed, they'll, you know, they'll be helping. And so it'll really be a team effort. We've got four on the books right now. Like I said, the street department has already started on four oh four North Court. But we've got five oh four North Court, seven oh one North Court and nine oh nine South Cutting. And then we will be bringing another batch to you all to take action on in, in June. Now, they're gonna fit it in. I mean, they're not gonna, you know, probably be able to do all ten. But, you know, over the next several years, I think we're gonna see a renewed effort to really clean up the town and get rid of the, you know, substandard homes. And if some of them are on lots that can be rebuilt, I mean, that would be ideal. Some of them are in floodplain, so they're not, you can't rebuild anything, but at least the insight that homes are gone. And, you know, all the problems that that has, you know, bees, rodents, I mean, and we had an issue actually today. You know, with bees at the house and one of our guys, you know, got stung quite a few times and got benadryl in him and, you know, he's, he's okay. But, yeah, so it's not, you know, agents work out there.
So is each agreement gonna be for four homes?
No, it's just a general agreement. I'm just letting you know what homes are. So it's just a general agreement. It's for a period of two years. So it'll be on their schedule. And the way that the agreement is worded is, you know, it'll be myself and the judge that'll, you know, I mean, I'll be working, she'll be working with commissioners and their schedule. And we'll see which one works and then we'll let them know which one to go to.
Go ahead.
One thing I wanted to say is, especially if you live out in the county, there's a lot of county roads that need help. So we're, you can only blade at certain times when there's been moisture. Thankfully, we had some recently, but in the summertime when that moisture hadn't fallen and you really can't blade, there's times where our heat index gets high enough where you don't want to clear county roads with a grinder or something, those kind of equipments. So that, those are times where we wouldn't really be active. We can schedule those in and come in the city limits with our equipment and, and work those in and, and I think take a huge chunk out of it. So really excited about that. And one thing I think sometimes we concentrate on the unincorporated areas of the city because we, we can't spend tax dollars there for the most part without interlocal like we have. But with, with the interlocal that we have, we also can serve, because everybody that lives in the city is, is a resident of the county. And so this is our way of also, in those different precincts, being of benefit to those voters and constituents that we have in the incorporated areas. So I think we can balance both. There's a lot of work through the county, but there's a lot of opportunity to help in the city too. So I just want to make that point. So if somebody in the county sees this, we're not just totally abandoning the county. And like you said, there's a schedule, but I think we can make it work and we're really, really excited about doing our part to partner with you all to clean the city up as well.
This is just another item that, that is good for all of us, you know, and it wasn't gonna happen till we had the right people in the right places. And I thank both of you and all the commissioners and all of us here on it. Now, motion on that?
I move to approve agreement between Stevens County Breckenridge Economic Development Corporation and the city of Breckenridge partner on the demolition of substandard structures.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye, none opposed. Thank you, thank you Cynthia, thank you Judge. Item twelve, discussion and any necessary action regarding change of order number three to the A M I meter replacement project.
So this is, as it, as we said, a change order number three on the A M I project. And really, I think the challenge has been, as it was before, is identifying where. As it was before, it's identifying where our um infrastructure is and that's, that's kind of been a challenge because sometimes there'll be an obsolete meter. Um sometimes the meter will be, it's a, it's registered at this address, but it's over on this property. Um there's been a lot of, you know, things like that and that, it's not unusual in smaller cities. Um but that is what's happened, so um this change order uh essentially uh will add additional days. As we discussed here in your background information and it will add a little bit more to the contract price, so the total increase uh. And the change orders in sixty-six thousand um and the total number of days um increased from. Two forty uh to three thirty-seven.
Any questions or thoughts?
This is the final one?
This is the final one, we're really wrapping it up and um, you know, we're, we're decided to roll it out. It will, I, I ain't say that, I think I said that.
And one of the final ones.
Yeah. Uh but I, I really think it was the last one.
I move to approve change order number three to the A M I meter replacement project.
Second, motion second, all in favor, uh none opposed, thank you. Item thirteen, discussion and any necessary action award F M thirty-nine-nine utility relocation project.
Uh I'm gonna let Sage get up and talk about this a little bit um. And then um if we can bring it back to me on the, what I will wanna uh update you guys on the pricing and what we're doing there.
Okay, uh good evening everyone, Mayor, Commissioners, uh Sage Diller, the E H T for the record. Uh this item here is uh for award of our waterline utilities replacement project there at the F M. Uh thirty-nine-nine intersection, the Texas is gonna be rebuilding, uh the city needs to relocate utilities prior to that construction. Uh this was put out for bid and I believe you have the results there in your packets. Um there were three bids received, um and the lowest price proposal was submitted by Lee Tech Solutions. In the amount of five hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. We have done the uh background research on contractor, the contractor has performed similar type work. Um and they being the lowest alternative proposed, we do recommend awarding this contract to them at this time.
So a couple of other things that I do want to point out is that um this. Obviously, I mean, the en- the engineering was like forty-five thousand and this was five uh twenty-one, the low bid is five twenty-one. Um in the budget, unfortunately, we only budgeted three hundred thousand for this project. So we are two hundred and eighty-six thousand over. Um now, obviously, a lot of that, I've been talking with staff a lot about um this next budget cycle. And making sure that we get good numbers and that we add the cost of inflation and we add contingency, um I'd rather budget too much and not enough. Um I guess the good news is um is that uh we do have the funds available in fund balance. Um to be able to cover that cost, um but um that's something that we are working. A lot on and I think most of my staff members would 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 agree that I'm constantly talking about this and as we go into the budget this next year, we're gonna have, hopefully, um. I don't want to say inflated prices, but I mean, that's what we've got, we've got very inflated prices, um still got supply chain issues. Um and I know Sage can talk to that about, we're not the only ones that are experiencing these bids coming in much higher. Um that's the situation that we have, we did uh, we did even a staff, if we as staff. Working with Texas out on these projects, utility relocation project, if we can prove that the utilities were there prior to forty, nineteen forty-three. Then they will reimburse us and that's what happened with Walker and that's what happened with one eighty-three north. Um unfortunately, we weren't able to do that and I'm sure Houston did his due diligence to try to track that down when he was here. Um but just in case, you know, we spent a lot of time uh re-tracking that down and just trying to make sure. And uh we pretty much came to the same conclusion, I mean, we, we don't have any documentation that says these roads were here uh before um. The utilities were there before uh nineteen forty-three, so uh I don't know if you wanted to speak to the fact that these bids are coming in high.
Yeah, a little bit more on that, so yeah, so we're seeing that across the board of of construction costs or still high material costs are high. Um with this project, one thing that we didn't quite know upfront was just the constrained um location of installing the utilities, there's. Text out, once they did their utility alignments, they came back and they said, okay, you've got this five-foot corridor here, oh, and there's a fiber optic and there's gas line and there's. There's all this, you've got to put this waterline in this location and it's very difficult and uh we did it actually, designed the project in two different manners to try to get better prices. One being open cut and one being slip bore, all the direct, all the whole length, so that you wouldn't have to go in there and open cut next to those other utilities. And um this, actually, this bidder was the lowest bidder and it's still with an open cut and so it's just a very tight confined construction area. Uh the price is higher than we anticipated, um but unfortunately, right now, we're seeing that on a lot of projects.
Well, y'all picked the difference up for us this time around.
I wish we could, I wish we could. Well, but what, you know, the challenge is now, you know, this just forces us for other projects in the future, you estimate them being higher, you know, and so it's like, where did it end? And so hopefully.
Nothing's going down.
All the contractors are busy and hopefully uh everybody will start getting caught up, become more competitive and then our bid prices will come back down. I would have thought that would have happened already, but it hasn't. Any questions on the project?
But Sage, who was the, who was the construction company?
Lee, Lee Tech Solutions, they're out of Alito.
Thank you, so I started looking at this, it's just so much, it's, I mean, sir, as far as the disparity between, between the three is.
Yeah, and keep in mind, you know, there's, there's two different tabs, there are two different pages, right? Award the, yeah, one is the uh proposed bid proposal, A is the, the slip bore option. Um and then the uh bid B is, is the open cut and um, you know. The contractor that had done the utility relocations on other project for text out here in Breckenridge. He bid a very, very high price, he was the highest bidder and that's just because he's got so much work going on that he just can't get to it. And so he, he, he at least gave a bid, but it was a very high bid, so.
Wasn't worried about getting it, yeah.
That's correct.
That, thank you all, thank you.
Thank you so much. No questions, have a motion on that, please?
I move to approve awarding F M thirty-nine-nine utility relocation project to the low bidder and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Okay, motion second, all in favor, uh none opposed, thank you. Item fourteen, discussion and any necessary action regarding ordinance number twenty-three dash oh nine. In ordinance of the city of Breckenridge, Texas, amending appendix A, fee schedule, sewer service charges of the Breckenridge Code of Ordinances to increase the base monthly rate. Providing repealer and severability clauses and providing an effective date, this is the first reading.
So this is um, again, this is the ordinance from the action that you all took last month.
Yeah.
And just changed the fee schedule and so we're bringing that, that back to you in the form of an ordinance and this will be the first reading.
Any thoughts or question, guys? Anybody will make a motion then?
I move, we approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-three. Dash oh nine, an ordinance of the city of Breckenridge, Texas, amending appendix A. Fee schedule, sewer service charges. For the Breckenridge Code of Ordinances to increase the base monthly rate. Providing repealer and severability clauses and providing. An effective date.
Okay, oh, motion second, all in favor, uh none opposed, thank you. Item fifteen, discussion and any necessary action regarding ordinance. Twenty-three dash oh eight, amending fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, official budget adopted by ordinance twenty-two dash fourteen. Bring it back to the city, please.
So essentially, what these are, you guys do these um as the need arises um. Two to three times a year, I'm not sure what the, what it's been before, but um this is the first budget amendment we're bringing to you. Um just as um. Education and I know you guys know this, but for everybody watching, a true budget amendment is when you change the bottom line of that budget. So every year during the budget, you guys take action to allocate how you're spending um the city dollars. Whether they're on the general fund side or the water waste water side, so if we change that bottom line, I mean, that's a true budget amendment. Um but we do come to you and we let you know where we're moving between line items to line item two. Um and so a lot of times what staff tries to do is, you know, a budget is looking at historic trends and looking forward and making your best, you know. Um best guess, if you will, on how to, how those funds are gonna be allocated, things can happen during the year. Um and so what we try to do is cover these items that maybe there's higher spending here, lower spending here from other line items. Uh now, in this one, there is a true budget amendment and that is um allocation of the insurance uh dollars that we received. Um and so you will see that in the actual ordinance, some of the first couple of lines there um are the, those increases. Uh what you don't see and we will bring it back to you um is uh. The funding of this contract, thirty-nine-nine, thirty-nine-nine utility relocation, so we'll be bringing that back to you. Um and that will be a budget amendment and there may be more, um what we're hoping, I mean, in that sense, it's even though we've got the money available from balance. If we can um cover it in other areas, part of it, that's, you know, what we're gonna try to do, so. Um we're uh, we're tightening the bell and um, yeah, you know, we had a joke about that in the part. Uh but it's no joking matter, we do take it seriously, so um you see detail there, if there's any questions, let me know, that's.
Will we approve ordinance twenty-three dash oh eight, amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, that is. Twenty-twenty-three official budget adopted, file ordinance twenty-two dash fourteen.
Motion second. All in favor, uh none opposed, thank you. Workshop items, item sixteen, discussion regarding street plan and a briefing of upcoming budget and debit. For about two minutes.
So um you have some information there before you and what I wanted to do is, you know, with our, we're coming in into the budget, obviously. Um we just got through with some strategic planning, um so I really kind of wanted to recap and highlight. Um some actions that have already taken and that um we are taking going forward as far as street improvements and the street plan, so. I'm gonna kind of boil this down and then if you guys have questions, let me know, but essentially, if you look um. We uh are doing a, is that the water line, yeah, go, go forward. Forward, yeah, okay, so this is a summary of the street plan, so these are all the things that we are doing and. Um in strategic planning, uh infrastructure was top of the list of things that needed to be addressed and. At the top of the list of the infrastructure were streets, which is no surprise to anybody who's driven a little bit here in Breckenridge. So what's already been in play is the pavement evaluation project, we do have a draft. Um of that project, it's not totally complete, but we do have a draft plan and then I'll take you back to that map in a little bit. Um so we're identifying those streets to be able to put into uh short, mid and long-term C I P capital improvement plan. Um for you guys and that's what you see in number two, so developing that um street capital improvement project plan. Um onboarding of the general street maintenance contractor, so um you know, with our street department fully uh staffed at five, which is not, um we've got three. Um there's no way that we could main sixty-six mile of city road, which is what we have and um the cost of. Uh improving those roadways with, and that's not being engineered, designed, would be like a million dollars a mile. So it's very expensive and the infrastructure is very expensive, so obviously um, you know, we've just got a map out a plan on how we're going to address it. And just paint bike size and that's what we're doing, so um. We're onboarding that general street maintenance contractor, I think what you're gonna see immediately are some. Projects, I mean, we're looking at Rose and we've talked about that a little bit, North Rose um down to Walker. Uh we're also looking at doing um some base failure repairs, some intersection, there's a lot of intersections um. That need a lot of work, so base failure, level up and overlay of some intersections, um Harvey and Elm is what we're looking at. Rose um and Elliot is one that we're looking at. Um there's a couple up by the high school, Miller and I think it's second or third um by the high school. Um Harvey and Williams, so uh we'll be getting with the, with the general contractor in the next few weeks. And identifying those projects for um that, and some pot hole patching, I mean, our guys will continue to do. But if we can get them busy on some of that, um that's what we're gonna kind of line out a plan for this paving season. Um and then, of course, the application of uh grant funds for street improvements, um it's a two-year cycle, if we get awarded. Um and in all honesty, I don't think we'll get awarded this first round, uh because we were just awarded something is what um public management is telling us. Um but we could very well get awarded the second one and that project that we're looking at is Panther from Jeanette to Fifth and then Fourth. Over to Parks, um Parks or Rose.
Correct.
Yeah, and then um, and then the county, again, a partnership project with the county, um they're putting in for a C D V G grant. Um to do streets here in Breckenridge and um they're probably, from what I'm understanding, more likely to get awarded. Um so they're looking at um. Third, uh I think I have it in there um. Third street north of the high school from Parks to Rose and then Hartford by the hospital, um from Elliot to one eighty water. Is the project that they will do and these are projects that um could be up to five hundred thousand dollars to grant scheme. Um so we're looking at that, we've got that in the works, um planning. There's been a lot of planning that has um been going on with um budget and debt and how we manage our debt. And so if you remember um going to the second sheet, um certificates of obligation debt issuance or some. Action, I, I just kind of want to go remind you guys what happened and where we're at coming up, so. Number one, in the water waste water fund, uh we conducted a rate study to identify needed improvements and associated financial impacts. And developed a five-year rating free schedule to accommodate the operations maintenance and current. Um debt service payments associated with the water waste water fund and that included the Texas Water Development Board. Uh low interest rate loans and loan forgive, loan forgiveness, so those projects were um, you know, contingent, they were approved. Recognizing that we're gonna take the debt for that and pay for out of the water waste water fund. Which frees up capacity on the general fund side. And that's action that you all have already taken and prepared for, part of that was, uh we also, I wasn't here. Um but you also identified extra money that you, we could put towards our debt. Um to the tune of one point four six nine million dollars and um if you look at. Um that page behind there. These are what they call um amortization schedules, but basically the debt repayment. These are what they call amortization schedules, but basically the debt repayment. On these, but. And these are the options that we're looking at, and you're not going to be taking action on any of this tonight, but I just wanted to preview. What's coming down the pike, so if you look at, I'm just going to take this first. One, and it's fifteen-year repayment. So if you look at that sheet, let me go back to the one point four six, one point four six nine million. You'll see a column there that says redeemed debt service. And so if you follow that all the way down. You'll be wondering, well, why does it say two point three million dollars? Well, because when we're putting this additional one point four six nine million on that debt service. We're going to save almost nine hundred and eighty. The difference basically, compared to the spleen that and in interest payments. So that's what that column is showing you, but if you start all the way at the left, you'll see the schedule of repayment there, the years. The taxable assessed valuation, what we're doing, these numbers are very conservative, and so what we're doing is. We're not increasing that assessed value. And you'll see that grow to zero all the way across, so you see the existing debt service there. You see what it's going to be reduced because we're paying that one point four six nine million on it, and what. The remaining is, and then what is remaining there in rent will move to the utility. Side, which is the water wastewater fund, and what that does, it frees up then, we have capacity on the general fund side. And that capacity is that twenty-five cent capacity. And what the schedule is telling you right now. According to the market with everything that we know, if it's fifteen years, it's about six point one million dollars. If it's twenty years, it would be seven point one something million that you would raise. For, yes, for capacity, so those would go primarily for streets. I am recommending, and I'll come with you, come back with more detail. But I am recommending also after that strategic planning that we did, looking at. A parks project on that and facilities. And again, I'm going to come back, and that would be, it'd be under a million, and we'll get the figures together, but the action, you know, this will be back on the agenda. For actions on the June, we're recommending, if you look at the calendar, you can see when you. When you float debt. Basically, debt, when you, we can get really complicated with this, but it's like going for a loan. Okay, but there's a certain way that we have to do it as a municipality, so this tells you the, the schedule of how you have to do it. We are recommending version one, both of the schedules would allow, we will know what our assessed value is, we'll have our certified values in hand. And then, you know, again, the action that you guys. Would, I would ask you to take in June would just be a notice of intent. And you would set that maximum amount, which I would say you would go above at seven point one, because you can always come down depending on what the numbers are at this. Again, you're not locked into anything at that point in time. The date to note there would be August first, that's, you know, but then by then, we'll have the certified values. In fact, we received estimated values that I sent to you guys over the weekend from the appraisal difference. And they are up right now, but you never know what's going to happen in protests, events like that. So we want to have those certified values in hand. So I kind of threw a lot at you with that. Did you guys have any questions on that? I'm going to come back to one other point, but we can stop there if you have any questions. So then on this, so basically the development of a CIP program, short term, midterm, and long term. I do want you to know just down at the bottom, it says this is a draft listing. Subject to change and is based on a lot of different factors. And the timing, some of it could be the timing of the type of water development. For projects, because we have a lot of water and sewer lines in both of those projects that will be. Done with construction, hopefully by twenty-five, but maybe they, the schedule slips, and so maybe that goes out a little bit. It also depends, I mean, like this project with the utility relocation came in higher than we thought. I mean, the projects themselves. You know, we, we want to have a better handle on what they might come in on, so this is a draft list, and you see the short term, you see Rose Avenue. The various intersection improvements, the CDVG and project both with the county and the city. And then you see the mid-term, two to five years, and so some of these. Could be moved to the one to two depending on different factors that could happen. And then, you know, the longer. But again, this is. Do you want to go back to the map that shows the draft? Right here, this is the draft payment plan. And I don't know if you want to kind of speak to the process that you guys used on this. It's not the final, but it's pretty close.
So this map shows the streets that were evaluated. We spent a lot of time looking at all of the different streets and trying to come up with recommended improvements, some of them. Need more than others, some need a lot of base work, some don't, some need just overlay or auto repair, then overlay. So we've gone through and we've ranked them all, we looked at kind of the criteria of, of what would be a higher ranking, we tried to hit the most impactful streets. That had the most traffic, you know, schools, churches, around the downtown area, thoroughfares, collectors through the south. Or each, kind of each quadrant, there's collectors that go, people will travel quite a bit to get from one side of town to the other. And so we've, we've identified those, we've put together cost estimates to include in that, and as Cynthia said. We have everything together in the report, we would like to sit down with city staff toward just before we have it finalized and presented to you guys. But this is information that we have. Some of this is aligning up with the Water Development Board projects. We don't want to go pave a street, and we're going to follow that up with a waterline replacement, you know, a couple of years later. And so we've identified, these are identified in Water Development Board funding. Those won't be completed until early to mid twenty-five. We have to get it bid out, get it constructed, so we're, we're estimating summer of twenty twenty-five, those would be eligible for paving. And those are back on the other map, those have been identified, other than Williams, that's one area I didn't notice. Williams is not on this map, and it will be in the final version. But once those utilities are up to date, then we'll be able to go through there and pave those sections. So there, it is good, Cynthia provided a lot of information, and, and the commission has started this process several, a couple of years ago, you've had changes of administration, it's good to see some. Continuity, you've got to change the rate structure, you kind of have a plan on how to address the streets, and, and that ball is continuing to move forward, and it's, it's good, it's good to see, so. Questions or anything?
I mean, that's what, yeah, I wanted to point that more, the only other thing I would say is that the other. Pot of money that we're also looking at is, you know, a quarter cent of the sales tax. Goes for streets, and so we've collected that, and not all of it has been spent every year. Obviously, probably, as you can see, so we do have, like, right now, there's, you know. Eight hundred nineteen, I believe, when I last looked at it, thousand, so. Part of that that we get, the general street rate on is the contractor, that we get them moving on. We may come back, if there's ways that we can get some of those projects done this year. You know, we will, that would be a budget amendment that we would bring back to you, to be able to spend some of that money this year, if we can. Just to, you know, we need to get, I know people need to see improvement, you guys have been. Preparing a lot of, you know, line after line, it's like that proverbial iceberg, right? All this preparation, and now we're starting to see it, and over the next, you know. One to two years, you're going to see something, but two to five years, you're really going to see some improvements.
If that's what it's designated for, and you just, you still have to approve or whatever, you know?
Yeah, what, again, it just comes down to when you allocate it, so we allocate like, you know.
Cynthia kind of just know where it's going.
Yeah. When, when we're going to spend it in, in the year, you have to designate that budget-wise.
Spend it all.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so it's sitting in the bank account, but we're, you know, I want to, if we, if we can.
Some of that money, will that be for the material that Michael and those people will use?
Radar?
Oh, Roach.
Well, yeah, so I mean.
Well, for the material.
Yeah, absolutely, so, yeah, we're not, we're not going to leave ourselves short, so, yeah. But like I said, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different strategies that are happening, but yes, exactly.
Is that all you've got to do?
It's a lot of information, but I mean, I'm gonna, I do, you know, I'm happy to sit down with you over the next month before the new meeting, if you look through this, and it's like, oh, well, what about this? Give me a call. And let me know. But we'll have the financial advisor here in June. And that would be, you know, when we would ask you to take action, and then, and again, that's just really high. Preliminary action, the real action will happen after we have the certified values. And this, you know, will be incorporated.
I tell you how much money we got there.
It's just money, right?
Money? Thank you. Any concerns for the next meeting? On the agenda, any of you? Is everything good? I appreciate all of y'all for being here. Let's go home. Thank all of you so much.